Hi guys, this is Praios and I'm a professional gambler today. We will have another session review. These are hands I played today. Unfortunately no PL0 40k as we had yesterday. These were all old hands. Nowadays only small games run. So yeah, PL0 500 was the best I could get for you. And yeah, we will review the biggest, not necessarily the biggest, but the hands where I was unsure what to do. Yep, had to close the door and now we are good to go and can get started. This is already the first hand. Pretty weird spot. Let's see how the solver would construct his range here and if I should have contributed the flop. Pretty sure I should, but yeah, let's look into this. So this is small blind vs big blind, 100% big blinds deep. Six, seven deuce, so seven... Yep, that's the one we are searching for. I mean, the suits are a bit different, but I guess this doesn't matter. Flop he was checking and check calling. And yeah, calling to this information we got on the screen. Checking should be what he's doing majorly. Yeah, his small blind range should not hit this board that often, so yeah, I guess... That's why he has to check that often. Even when he hits, he has to add a lot of slow plays. And now I should bet around 50% of the time. Should I bet my hand? Yeah, my hand should be bet 100% of the time, which is what I did. Called. Turn is the eight of hearts. We have to change stuff a bit. And yeah, what is, how big is this donking range? Not very big. Yeah, let's see what he is supposed to donk. Here we go. I mean, I was quite lost in this spot, to be honest. High curl PL0, I'm fine. Had a good session today. Bottom two nut flush blocker, overpair nut flush blocker. So nut flush blocker gets used mainly for the bluffs. Top two from open ender. Okay, double bottom, flush blocker. Nut flush. Yeah, so this range is built around nut flushes, flushes and flush blockers. Occasionally you will have some random dongs like bottom two. The sizing is not the one he used, so yeah, but just for fun's sake, let's see how I should press, what I should do with my hand. When I got a flush, I should call. And even without a flush, against the big sizing, I'm still supposed to call quite often. Yeah, so against this small sizing, I wasn't sure at all what to make of it. Yeah, but I also called. The price was just too good. We are doing better than just having two pair because we have three pairs, so we have six outs against the flush. And if he is betting something else, he might have even more because we also have an open ender. Not the best one, but still a little help, but might be handy. And yeah, we also blocked the flush a bit, so yeah, I guess calling is fine. And yeah, river, then check, check, and he had seven, eight, two. Yeah, not sure why he donk the turn. That wouldn't be my standard. And yeah, I also wasn't bluffing river. I thought that he most likely made a low or medium flush and now wants to check call. And yeah, he doesn't want to risk to get raised. And yeah, he thought that he is not getting value from this, but yeah. So that was my thinking, that I don't bet the river. And yeah, I guess I'm beat most of the time if the line happened like explained. And yeah, this was just an outliner. But yeah, strange line he took, very strange. Maybe I need to have a closer look what he's doing. Because he's doing these random stuff more often than I expect. Yeah, so I will have a close eye on you, beer from LT. Moving on to the next hand, or it's against the same opponent. Not sure what happened on the flop. Guess most likely check call. So that's again the same situation, but the different board. So it's queen, ten, seven. Nailed it. Almost nailed it. Yeah, no. He should bet a lot more because this is way better for the small blinds range. Seven, five, six. No, that's wrong. Sorry, need to click back. He was continuation betting, if I remember correctly. And with my hand, I should call only, never raise, which is what I did. Now we have the two in the hearts. And he checks. We should check back. Yeah, we have a betting frequency that's very low. Yeah, seems like we don't have protection high up in our list. We just want to get closer to showdown. At least what is, that's what the solver is willing to do in this situation. Um, yeah. So this should not be bad on the turn, although against most humans, I would bet at a higher frequency than 10% because let's face the reality, often they have marginal stuff or stuff that's giving up. But these hands might have a lot of equity against yours, so betting for protection is essential here. And I probably would divide against many opponents from GTO and better higher percentage than 10%. Ah, I think I did the continuation bet and he called. Oh, I remember the sound. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's exactly what happened. And I did another continuation bet and called again. Yeah, that's also an interesting spot. Let's see if we should continue to fire on the turn on this hand, so... Looks correct now, and the board is ace, five, six. We got the exact board. Our hand is ten, nine, six, eight. Yeah, that's quite surprising that our continuation bet range is not bigger. I mean, we should check 29% of the time. I would have expected almost 100% continuation bet. Yeah, I guess on ace, on an ace and another big card when it's the case. But yeah, with this two low cards, the continuation frequency goes down a bit. Yeah, so I should bet 50% mainly, and I think that's what I did. Our hand is supposed to bet small. Yeah, this is what I did, and I got called. Now the turn is queen and spades, so what should our hand do now? So the mid pair with the gut shot gives up, but if we pick up a flush draw two, then we want to ship in some monies. Solver also wants to use a quite big sizing. In-game I used smaller one, but yeah, so solver would prefer pot-sized bet. Yeah, what happened here is, this was a very strange hand. I was betting like 50%, he calls. River is a five, bringing my ten-high flush. I timed down until the last second and then decided that he can call with this and then was shipping all in. And yeah, he called with ace, king, jack, something, so top pair. Assuming that I might be bluffing, whatever, I might be bluffing, it's miss straight or flush draw, I guess. Yeah, that seemed a bit light, and yeah, my sharp was already light, but yeah, his call was, yeah, light too. Yeah, so that's the river. I shipped in and he called. Okay, that's also interesting. Probably should not have three bet in the first place. Yeah, I did because this is, the question is also, did I three bet or did I raise the limp and then he three bet me? I think I probably three bet. Yeah, this is quite loose, but yeah, looking at his stats after seven hands, he has 57% VPI, so he's probably a very loose guy. And yeah, isolating against someone like him can't be too bad. So let's make this button against cut-off instead. Check ten, three. Check ten, four, it is. And our hand is ten, six, six, eight. Yeah, this is also a board where our opponent should have a decent leading range, but here is not in this hand, but keep this in mind when you get into spots like this. So he checked to us, what is our hand supposed to do? Oh, we are not allowed to have it. That's not good. Can we change it into something that we are allowed to have? Ten, six, eight, eight, we are also not allowed to have. Is this allowed? No. Let's make it ten, ten... Six, seven. Not allowed. Six, eight. Or ten, that is also like, not what we should have because this is completely changing the board. Oh man, that's annoying. Are we allowed to have it? Poker Trainer, the ranges differ a bit, so let's see if we are allowed to have our hand here or something close to it. Ten, six, six, eight. Yeah, I already said before that this is quite ambitious. It's always annoying when the hands we got are not showing up. Come show baby. No, this one is not allowed to three bet. This is a nine. Still not allowed. So keep in mind, if when you want to analyze your session, this will not work out with a solver when you use hands which the solver is not three-betting at all. Why is the solver such a nit? Such a nit. Yeah, but yeah, I checked back. I guess it's fine. If we get raised on the flop, we are in a world of pain. Yeah, we cannot confirm this play, get it confirmed from the solver because yeah, he is not using this hand at all. Hmm, this might also give us trouble because this again is a hand that might not get defended. Let's see. Not sure. Whoops, missed click. Do I think that I should defend this hand or not? It's close, probably not. But let's see. Well, it's definitely close to getting defended. Eight, seven, seven, nine. Double suited is definitely defending. Single suited is not, is my guess. Okay, double suited, it is three betting and yeah, our hand, although it's 44%, okay, solver is undecided if he should three bet or just call with our hand. So that's nice, so we can see a flop here. Okay, we had scrolled a bit too far. Ace, five, three. Ace, five, four is only one getting provided. Okay, that's fine, two, I guess. Ace, three, six, I could choose. Okay, let's take this one. He is using a not-allowed bet size. Okay. Let's see. I mean, this, this could be, I mean, is it a raise or just a call? Sometimes solver uses hands like this to raise forward. Let's see. Yeah, you can see it's raising sometimes and calling sometimes, so... If we raise and get re-raised, are we now letting go? No. Okay, we don't let go. Hmm, can we continue after just calling? Okay, unfortunately, this is the end of, this is the end of the journey in Poker Trainer, so... Let's do the same scenario, button versus cut-off in this one because we can also look into turnplays. And this is the only board where he can continuation bet a lot. These are boards generally are hugely favoring the pure of aggressor. So if we face a bet, what is Vision suggesting? Vision is... Seems like PL0 Trainer is liking a raise more and seems like Vision is preferring calls slightly. Interestingly, the flush blocker should also raise more often than the actual hand. So I hope I recorded the turn card too. So, no. Let's come up with a random turn. Like a check and diamonds. Are we not folding? I guess. It's probably reasonable. No. Just get it in. What? This seems like complete insanity. I would highly prefer call over raise. Very interesting. I mean, I guess we have a shit-ton of fold equity here, so this probably makes it a good raise. Yeah, but you see, it's not a call. It's, it's a raise on the turn. On the turn, the raise is even more surprising when on the flop. But yeah, I get it. I mean, I can make up reasons for that. I can dominate other draws. I can get a lot of aces to fold, even aces up. So yeah, I guess that makes sense and these hands sometimes should be played more aggressive, I guess. But yeah, my standard so far was to call turn as well. And if he checks, should I bet? Yeah, I should bet 100%. Hmm, yeah, these tools are expensive, although the PL0 Trainer is not expensive yet because I think free months, I will get it for free as PL0 Mastermind member. But after that, this will be 150 bucks. This is too expensive, I gotta say. I mean, yeah, even a lot of bucks in it still. Let's find out if it's fixed already. Okay, I think, what was it? Probably... Here. Yeah, this board was completely messed up. Oh, nice one. They repaired it, but they didn't gave me notice. Before that, it was 100% check and I was like, what the fuck? This board is 100% bet for sure and 50% more cannot make the difference because 100% this is also 100% bet. And yeah, I wrote a very, very annoyed message to PL0 Mastermind guys and PL0 Trainer guys. And yeah, they apologized and seems like they repaired the bug and now it seems to work now. Yeah, they said that the numbers displayed here were different from the ones in their sim, but yeah, still... Yeah. But still very annoying. I mean, how many other things might be messed up where it's not that obvious that the sims are messed up and where people play after this suggestions, they are completely wrong. So let's hope that this is not playing too often. Oh, that's also interesting. Is this a three bet? Maybe. Let's see. If this is a three bet, so back to 100% sims. Raise, fold, 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 download. Six, seven, eight, nine, double suited. I mean, when I see such a beautiful hand, I cannot hold myself, even a ganz andere gun. Six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, looks like it's okay to three bet here. I'm not sure if we get flop on your turn as well. Let's see. I have another screenshot waiting after this one. Can't remember anymore. Jack, nine, three. Sure. Seems, this is... Let's see here. Check nine, three. Okay, we have to use this one instead. Positions are different. Three bet pot, 100% B. Small blind versus UTG. This is also very interesting what I should do here. I think in-game I checked and probably it's correct. Let's see. Interestingly, on a board like this, we should check the majority of our range. Let's see if six, seven, eight, nine is also getting checked. Okay, it's a mix. But when I got the flush draw two, it's 100% check. Mid pair with the gut shot should bet most of the time, so the weaker hand, we want to bet. So I should check and if he bets, only option is 50%. I think that's actually what he did in-game. What should we do? We should call. Things were, I think that's what I did. There's, oh, there's, where is it, turn? Seven to jack, okay. Ten of spades it is. Straight low flush draw, okay, we... Yeah, using a mixed strategy now, but most of our hands should donk pot. Anyways, I checked. I think he was betting big or was he betting small? Let's say he's betting big. And now I should get it in. That's what I did. Yeah, okay. So that's exactly how the hand went. Yeah, he bet. Okay, you can see the bet size here. Yeah, I get it in, but he had a huge hand. I think I lost. He had check, check, king, something with a flush draw two, so... Yeah, I had a set, so could improve to full house. He could improve to better straight. He could improve to the flush and we were like flipping. I think I was slightly ahead, but yeah, controlled. I guess this is a defense. I would bet some money on it, but yeah, not 100% sure. That's why I marked the hand. So let me know what you think. Chat is with... Yeah, but you're right. Pre-flop sims in vision now work too, but they work very badly. And yeah, some sports... And yeah, some spots don't work at all and the, it's also a pain in the ass to to handle this thing because yeah, it's programmed very badly and the user experience is bad and I don't know where to click to to get to the spots and stuff, it's, it's made very badly. Um, yeah, I think also it's defend. Ace, king, ten, three, or six, ace, king, ten, six. Hmm, yeah, it's a defend. It's a defend, yeah, that's what I thought, oh, that's, that's very annoying flop. He's not even having full stack, uh, he's also playing way loser when he should. So let's make this. Small blind versus button. Three bet pot, single suited pot, queen eight uh, queen eight six. And let's take this one, although this is a bit worse, but yeah, let's take this one, uh... We have no nut flush blocker, we have also have no nut flush draw, so checking is correct. And he cannot bet pot, come on. Why is he betting pot? He's not supposed to do this ever. Okay, uh, jokes aside, let's see, um, what I'm supposed to do. With the nut flush draw, I should re-raise, with the nut flush blocker, I should call. With the overpair and the flush blocker, I should fold more often than with just an overpair. But this also has vector flush draw. No vector flush draw means fold, okay. Yeah, I did exactly that, but yeah, this was painful. But I guess it's correct, um, and another one. Uh, we missed completely, but this time it's also a lot harder for opponent to have something. Hmm. Yeah, same positions, I guess. Because, yeah, queen six four. Yeah, queen six, or seven three, let's take seven three. We got ace, ace, four, jack. We have no flush blocker. With a flush blocker, seems like we want to get in. With high flush draw, understandably, we want to get into. With just an overpair, we should still bet. Overpair nut flush blocker should bet for sure, okay, so our hand is not betting always, but sometimes and it's checking. I'll be folding. This is also a size. It's a crime, cannot look into the situation, okay, an overpair should call. It's, it's a bigger size, um... If we bet and get raised, we probably should fold. Is, uh, yeah, I mean... What should happen? I mean, best case, we play against an ace high flush draw with not much more and worst case, we play against a set and are buried. So what to do if getting raised? Uh, what? We should continue. This seems quite ambitious again. Yeah, solver is not scared at all, um... Let's make this a cutoff instead because the guy we are playing is a bit loser when normal. So and he re-raise. Calls, let's see if we got the board we desire, um, no. No, we don't got it, so we have to use this one too. And yeah, we should, what should we do according to the sims of the PLO mastermind? They differ quite a lot often, um... Yeah, the hand is supposed to bet mainly as well and if we have let's put in our exact hand, but the suits differ here, so we have like hearts and hearts and here we have uh, we block the backdoor flush draw, so diamond and club. It has not find equilibrium yet, but looks closer to a check when I bet, uh, okay. And once we checked here, we can also face a pot size bet, let's see what we are supposed to do. Guess a pot size bet. Uh, it seems like we want to fold. And we are calling when we have the backdoor flush draw. Right, and yeah, sometimes we also though this looks, although, yeah, I mean, it might crack. Why is this one having a higher EV than the one with vector flush draw? This makes no sense at all. What? Oh, man. These sims are driving me crazy, um... Okay, um, let's say, I guess a pot size bet is a fold. Makes the most sense to me, um, let's also check, um... Once we face a huge raise, if we should continue still or if this sim has some folds in there, okay. This one has some folds and looks like this, for example, is close to our hand. So yeah, probably we can fold our hand because our hand is complete garbage, um, let's so we have a diamond, a club and hearts. Yeah, so, oh, I can still fold it race. Hmm, according to Janendes, by the way, the sims um, that will, that are provided from the mastermind should be a lot more accurate than the ones from Run Once. Um, I sent a request to Run Once and they decided to not answer my request in which I asked for the, um, iterations per note. Yeah. I mean, probably with, then, they might not answer because the iterations per note are very, very small according to Janendes and yeah, maybe we don't want to answer because this is not, um... letting their product look great at all and we have like a very small amount of iterations per note. So yeah, this might be the reason, or just some random support dude got it and he did not understood and that's why went in the rubbish bin right away. Oh, I remember that one, I got so lucky here. Got so lucky, um... What happened here? Uh, pot is too big, right? Pot is too big. I think I... There was another guy in the pot. Two. Yeah, I got insanely lucky, but I think, um... Yeah, let's come up with a situation that is not really the one we are facing, but come up with a situation that can help us to understand, uh, this better, so let's make this instead, uh... Button versus cutoff. Calls, nine, seven, six, five, nine, seven, five. Whoops. Nine, seven, five. Uh... Nine, seven, six it is. So what should I do with jack, check, king, queen? Should bet. Although, uh, it's unclear what I should do, uh... Okay, I could bet or check. If I bet and get raised more, what should I do? King, queen, jack, check. I should get in, okay. Yeah, for me, this looked like so insanely strong, but I was very scared and just called. And turn was a seven or something. Or five, five it was, and he bet again, very small, like 14 BB into 100 BB and I was like, okay, that's a fair price. And the river, I got very lucky, it was a check, so I made the top boat and yeah, I checked to him again, he slammed the money in. I snapped cold and he had a full house. Yeah, he had a full house too, but yeah, I sucked out. He was trying to mark me, but yeah, sometimes this goes wrong and people get lucky. That's what happened. Uh... Yeah. Yeah, I think both run the sims not long enough. Uh, super picks, uh, I think you can also, I, in theory, run custom uh, sims in PLO trainer, but it's not working. I tried, it's not working. Nobody cared. At least Janendes did not care. I, I sent him a video, I'm 100% sure that I did everything correct. He just said, "Fuck off", so basically, "Fuck off" was his reply. You visit also, this was like insanely, uh, strange this hand. Yeah, I mean, he said like, "I don't want to give, uh, support to you because if I would go and give support, individual support in Skype and I had, I have so much on my plate, I have so much to do, uh, yeah. Figure it out or go to the Discord and ask it where, there might be some of the other guys in our company answering it." Yeah, I mean, it was Janendes himself, he was not the customer support. Uh, where I ask, uh, the question, but yeah, he could also have, uh, said it a bit nicer, but yeah, whatever. It's okay, I mean, I don't care, um... Yeah, this hand was extremely strange, uh, I bet flop, he called, on turn I bet small, he called again and on river he's now dunking all in. Trying to sell a boat. But in my eyes, his story does not make that much sense. I mean, if people have two pair on the flop, they usually want to get it in. And he was not raising the flop. And if he has two pair on the turn, usually he, or I'm not sure if people still call, I mean, if you have, has like queen five, five eight. Okay, five eight is not making a boat, so he has to have queen five or queen eight. Um, not sure if this hand score against like a half size pot bet still. I mean, we might, as all the straight draws missed. So yeah, he has to have slow played on the flop and then made a speculative call on the turn and now he's dunking all in. So this was also a very tough sport. Yeah, queen eight often shoves the flop, it could also be queen four, where he made, uh, two pair on the turn. I, I called, I did not believe that he has it because I thought that he would raise flop with two pair and yeah, he had random bullshit. He had like nine, ten jack or something. Yeah, I had nine, ten jack. Not, not a boat. Yeah, I was also very surprised to see, uh, to see his hand. He could also turn something else into a bluff like five, eight. But yeah, not sure. I mean, against many people, the river call might be bad, but against him, I for some reason thought that he could be bluffing. And yeah, I was lucky this time. It was also, uh, quite, quite risky from him. He had no blockers, if I remember correctly. He had just had a rap or something, like a straight, I had a rap and no blockers. I mean, the nut flush blocker also does not make too much sense to play this way. I mean, are you calling the nut flush on the turn and then, or when the board changes, are you leading all in? This is also like crap. Yeah, I think he had nine, ten jack for like a rap, where he was on the turn not convinced. The river, he thought he might be able to get me off a flush. I mean, it almost worked, I mean, I was like, oh man, did he has it? But when I was like, ah, people raised two pair on the flop, his story doesn't make too much sense, but it's also hard to find any blasts for him. But yeah, in the end, after the, the countdown went down to zero seconds, I clicked in the very last split second and yeah, took it down. That's probably not a defend, let's see. I guess it's an open, but another defend, the end now, uh... King, ten, ten, four. King, ten, ten, four. Hmm, double suited to defend, single suited is what? Yeah, it's a defend. Wow. Did not expect this to be a defend, but it is. Okay. I'm such a nit, I folded. Yeah, I, I thought it's a fold too, I mean, it's, it's close, you can see, uh, you lose 0.18 big blinds less when you call in instead of folding, but yeah, I mean... I still, actually, although I see the results of the solver, I still think that it's kind of a fold, I mean, this hand plays so terrible. Yeah, it's, it's, it's small, but if you, um... It's 18 BBs if you have the situation 100 times. So it's actually not that small, but yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't mind that I folded this one. This is quite bad. Okay. Oh. He three bet me, I probably, am I allowed to call? Am I allowed to open? Many, uh, open questions for this one. Okay, let's first figure out if it's an open. I say it is, but can we convince otherwise? Ten ten, jack, king. Yeah, only rainbow, it's not an open. So this was done correct and now I face a re race from this guy. I should fold if I block my own flush outs, otherwise I should continue. Which is what I did. And yeah, now I get a nice looking flop. So what to do? So let's look into this nice flop. Oh man, why did I clicked 1000 times back? Could have just used it. What is it? Five, eight, nine. Whoops. Five, eight, nine. Nine, eight, five. Nine, eight, five, but we needed the suits. Nine, eight, five. Here we go. This might be a donk. Ten ten, jack, queen. Is ten ten, jack, queen a donk? Yeah, it's used as a donk a lot. Okay, I should donk and once I donk, what happens if I get raised? Ten ten, jack, queen. Oh, it's ten ten, jack, king. Now I should be all in. What? What? This confusing. I should be all in with the ones with diamonds and not all in with the other hands. Okay, so I should donk fold. Okay, and if I check, whoops, no. No, I need to find the board again. So if I check, face a bet, what am I doing now? Ten ten, jack, king. Okay, I'm only slow playing hands with flush draws, so if I check, I cannot tell what to do with my hand as I'm never, as I'm so not supposed to do this ever. We are also having trouble to get we have no situation with similar to this one in vision because we only have cut off versus button. But we could also look into the same sport, button versus cutoff. Straight board, nine eight five. And he has a huge stonking range, which probably includes this hand, right? No, not really. Mine is your check. I like. Okay, and oh, this is a small bet. Probably should call, right? Over pair, open ended straight draw. Ah, that's what I got. Should call the flush blocker. I should raise, flush draw, I should, okay, flush draw makes sense, so. Yeah, okay. So if we check, we should not check raise. I mean, even with the flush blocker, I don't see why I should check raise. Okay, these check raising hands have backdoor flush draws. I don't, I have backdoor flush draw. So I should check raise according to vision with slightly, no, not only slightly, with different positions. Okay, is the hand go? I think the hand probably ended now. This is also like not the bad sizing, although, yeah, Jane Nanda's bad sizing was what? 50%? Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I mean. Okay, check calling seems to be fine. Check raising might also be okay-ish. I mean, you fly, maybe against humans, check raising might be even the better alternative because people fold a lot of stuff that has you beat, like queens, aces, kings, although you block kings. And we are usually not in that bad shape. I mean, we at least have an open end and a backdoor flush draw. And as he raised from middle position, it's very hard for him to crash with board. I mean, he can have aces with the nut flush draw. This is the main thing we are scared from. I mean, he could have aces with six, seven, but yeah, I mean, how often does that happen? We continue with a lot of, well, no. I mean, if we are smart, we check back a lot. Okay, we have a vision announcement. Let's look into this. Did we, yeah, I think we finished this and what is the announcement? Partnership with PLO vision. Okay. We Okay, but actually this is not helping that much. Or do I find the information here? No, this is not the information I'm searching for. It's not telling us the accuracy with that the sims are solved. So you wasted my time with this announcement. Okay, let's continue. Is this a three bet? I guess this can, I can use this as a three bet for sure. I say yes, it is three bet. Chat, you can give me your wisdom now before we see the conclusion. Yeah, 20 notes iterations, I mean, Jane Nanda's often has 500 notes per iteration. So 20 is not much. So Jane Nanda's sims should be more accurate. Singles suited it is. I can't three bet. I'm a beast when I recognize this, so. This one is annoying. This is very annoying. I wonder if I should fold according to the solver. The solver is not scared that much, so probably not, but let's see. I wonder if I should call pre-flop. Most likely not. Yeah, we can find this out too. So it's nine, nine. Four. Hmm. Not a board. We are looking eight, eight, four. Okay, let's take this one instead. And he checks, we bet. And our bet is even closer, smaller, he's raising. What should we do? Okay, yeah, not sure. Yeah. Meanwhile, we made, we might have made new and better sims. It seems like mainly we want to call. I said that the solver is not scared. I think I wasn't scared either, but I don't remember anymore. I might have been scared, I don't know. I mean, this plays so badly if you continue it. Can we continue here? No. Okay, let's Okay, oh, nine, nine, four. Oh, that's exactly our board. That's nice. So this is raised port. Let's make this instead and it's rainbow, it's nine, nine, four. And so he should check always. Okay, that's not, he should check often, let's say it this way. So if we have ten, ten, ace, jack, we should not bet ever, but we did. And he's using a different raise size. Okay. So if we get raised, we don't fold. Okay, let's, what? Let's make it a complete blank. I guess we fold now. So he bets. And we fold. Yeah, that's what I expected. But yeah, on the flop, you're not convinced yet. Oh, Swisser defend. Oh, is that, who, you, you, this is more interesting than the one we had before. This is close. What do you think, chat? I say it's a defend. Two connected, ace, kings are made, it's a defend. Yeah. Correct. Is this a three bet? It doesn't look too bad. I mean, probably not, the five is, I say if the five is would be another card like an eight, nine or 10, then probably it is. But this should be just called, right? No, it should not be called. Should be re raised. Is it doos enough too? Yeah, it seems like even a deuce is fine. Okay, that's a re race. I'm such a nit. It did not re race. Okay, can I bluff or should I bluff this board? Two backdoor flush draws. And the gut shot and blockers to various straights. No, it's not a call, it's a re race according to the solver. But I thought it's a call too, as you can see, I just called. I should not bluff. Betzer open, chat. You saw that? Would you bluff with this flop? No, would you not? Uh, where is it? King? Eight, nine. Nine, eight. Nine, five, nine, eight, seven. Oh man. Okay, let's see if king, what is it? Eight, nine. Come on, king eight, nine, you have it. King, nine, eight. Perfect. But not the right. It is button versus big blind. And it's still king and eight. Queen, jack, jack, five. This is also a free bet in the world of this. Yeah. According to this, we should also have three bet as we are also not having two backdoor flush draws in this. But we could donk sometimes. Okay, if check. Yeah, we cannot analyze the situation properly. He's also, this bad sizing is also bigger than the one. We should fold. No three bet, no flop check raise unfortunately. But the situation is a bit different as we have backdoor flush draws too. So yeah, I should not three bet here. That's what we learned. Three bet, raise the flop. And we should pre-bet, three bet, pre-flop. Okay, I did raise the flop. And now a card that proved me a bit, yeah, I used it to bluff again and it worked out. So yeah. I divided from the strategy of the solver, but I got lucky. I mean, not necessarily, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I still think this bluff is okay against most. And yeah, I give up on turns that don't improve view. But if you have blockers to the straight or if you hit the backdoor flush draw, then you should continue. That's my reasoning here. And yeah, there are also a lot of turns which you can continue on. A ten, diamond, a heart. When do the blockers come into play? Queens, for example, is another card, could continue bluffing. A jack is, I guess a jack is now getting a check. Yeah, I guess check, you should check. Although you hit a set because yeah, some straights came in and yeah, depending. I mean, we cannot hit a flush draw two with a jack, right? So yeah, but check call probably on jack. We could also bet on a jack, to be honest. Yeah, I mean, mix it. Bet some because you also have a straight blocker. Hmm, that's a bit interesting. Should be bad or should be check? What do you think? Hmm. Big blind, 100 BB and that's not good. Okay, that's better. Okay, we have a board. Unfortunately with the wrong suit, but we will change it very soon now to be exactly. Okay. Pre-blew aggressor should check very often on this board, most likely also with the hand we got. Swiss correct. Yeah, we should check. Even the nut flush draw checks most of the time. So once we check, probably call to a bet, right? Yeah. With a nut flush draw, we pull in a trap and raise often, but sometimes still just call. But yeah, I trap and raise often, but sometimes still just call, but yeah, our hand is not qualified to raise, as Tony G would say. So call and see what's happening. Oh, this is... This is a bit tough, I would say. Yeah, check and bet is a marginal difference, I would say too, but yeah, especially against people who put a lot of pressure on you on boards like this, a check is way better, I mean... You are not supposed nine, five, four, you are not supposed to hit this very often with your small blind raising range, so against good opponents that can bluff hard, you better check, but yeah, against the general population who is not bluffing enough, also probably not recognizing stuff like this often enough, uh, it's a small difference, I, I agree. Maybe even against general population, a bet might be better, because yeah, it's very hard to navigate properly um, on all sort of runouts with our hands. Um, this is tough, uh, we, we called the flop. And now we made a very huge chance. What should we do? Should be raise? I mean, for hundred BB, I think this is most likely raise. UTG versus button is correct, single suited flop is correct, single raised pot is correct. Ten dos four. Ten dos five, okay, agreed, um... He bets, which he should not do that often, but I think, uh, this is a general, uh, tendency of most people to oversee bet, and I not even think it's a huge issue, because yeah, uh, life is just a lot easier when you are the aggressor, and yeah, in general, um... People will not play back enough against this and exploit you, so yeah, c-betting too much is against most people not a mistake, um... With a flush draw, we should continue, with the flush blocker, we can raise occasionally, uh, so yeah, call was exactly what the solver would suggest. And yeah, now yucky mucky is betting again. And yeah, we should put in the money. Ching, ching, ching. Uh, yeah, you, um, yeah, we have good equity against a set too, although we are on the turn, keep that in mind, so not that more cards to come. Uh, against a set of tens, we are not doing well, against a set of eights, we also not do well. I mean, against a set of fours or doses, it's probably okay. Yeah, I think, um, in hindsight, uh, I think I was a bit too nitty, I should not have. Although, also keep in mind that we cannot handle runouts very well. If we raise and get called, uh, we will not do, um, that well on most runouts, so that's why calling cannot be that bad. I guess that's what, oh, this was also one of my other reasons for just calling, because yeah, if a diamond hits, and he bets again, I'm not happy at all. If, uh, if any straight comes in, it's, I mean, most of the higher straights don't feel good as well, I mean, check, queen, hmm, what is it? Nine, seven, all these cards suck, so half the deck is bad. Yeah, sure, we have full equity, uh, that's right, but yeah, we could also, um... Maybe get a lot of more money, I mean, let's say he folds an ace high flush draw now. But if he just called, there were blanks, he probably, um, bluffs again, because he's not never putting us on a strong hand. And yeah, so very hard to say, um, what is better. Uh, in general, probably, I should probably raise more often than, than just call. Because yeah, our hand is just too strong, and we want to put in more money, and we can get called by a lot of things that we have crushed, like draws, although draws we don't crush that hard. Ten eight might just might call or get crazy, although hard to say. I mean, PLO often is not about, um... The hand you got right now, but the hand you will have on the river, and yeah. We will not have the nuts on the river that often. So calling can't be too bad, but yeah, I agree, uh, that we should raise at least some of the time, maybe even the majority of the time too. I mean, with hundred BB, it's, I would do the same as a solver, but I think with this deck size, it's okay to only raise like, let's say sixty percent of the time. Okay, moving on, last hand. Oh, this was, uh... Yeah. Sick one too, um... I was a bit, it was bad to get involved pre-flop with this hand, so, uh, I think jack min-raised, I called because I wanted to play with jack, and I also had the hope with bio wolf, nine, 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 would come along, both, um, recreational players, which I love to play against even with this hand, and yeah, unfortunately, the blood, um, put in the re-raise. And now, yeah, I was in the trap and had to call, and jack folded, and bio wolf came along, but bio wolf folded on the flop. Uh, when Vlad was betting the full pot, but yeah, um, with a rap, how many outs does this rap has, uh... I think it's, hmm... Six, seven, it's nine plus eight, so sixteen outs, if you don't discount, um... The cards that bring a flush, and yeah, if you, and yeah, you also have to keep in mind that our hand is not to the nuts in most cases, so... Yeah, this is a very tricky spot. But yeah, it felt like I cannot fold on the flop. And if he checks turns, I would jam all in quite often, so, uh, let's say he... I mean, we are many hands, but get scared once a flush hit. And yeah, I can jam on flashes sometimes, and hope to get like, what can I get a fold, like two pair stuff? Yeah, not sure if it's a fold, I mean, keep in mind, uh, bio wolf is playing an insanely huge range, and our rep is quite good. I think it's very hard for us to get away, and on the turn, it's also hard for us to get away. Because we need less than, we need like thirty percent or something equity. Hmm... Let's do UTG, three bet pot. Single suited. UTG versus small blind. On eight, nine, four. We just have eight, nine dos, but I guess this is not that huge of a difference. So if he's potting, we have, if we pro, ah, we, we might have a problem. Six, seven, ten king. Wow, I'm allowed to have this, that, that's, that's great, uh... No pair, yeah, we should call, even against the pot size, although that's not... Didn't take my click yet. Yeah, you see, uh, we should continue, I mean, we, we could basically, I was ignoring him, because yeah, he is having such a huge range. And we are not crushed that hard, even when it's get, you're getting in three way. But I, I, my, um, my guess was that I have no full equity when he's potting flops, so yeah, I have to wait for turns where I might get some full equity again. So yeah, I should call, and yeah, now it's like, what is it? Let's make it a four in something. Make it this. And now he bets again, pot. So what should I do? I should call. Well, it's, well, yeah, I'm folding sometimes, which I'm folding, why is here five percent fold, okay, this one for another reason wants to fold, I think this is just incorrect. Yeah, I, I... Yeah, I mean, still, um, the hand is just too huge, I mean, it sucks that we have no, no nuttiness or not much nuttiness, and some of our own might be tainted. But yeah, still, our hand is very strong, I mean, often, we have like fifty percent equity on the turn still. Or if he has a set, for example, we, we do very well, or if he has like eight, nine, nine, four or something, we also do very, very well. It's just bad when he has a flush draw, but he's also not playing that many flush draws that aggressive, he has to have the nut flush draw, or he has to have aces with a flush draw, so... I mean, these are definitely in his range, but yeah, I, I think, um, if you take his whole range into account, um, this is played correctly, although it feels like, uh, we played it not well at all. Um, by the way, I had almost fifty percent equity, and he has had like eight four, so bottom two pair with some other bullshit. And I got lucky and won, yeah, unfortunately, have to go now. Um, I hope you enjoyed it and you learned something. I definitely learned something, and yeah, join next time as well, I mean, I'm streaming almost every day, and yeah, a lot to learn for all people interested in the game of PLO, yeah, I wish you good luck at the tables, bye, until next time.